I'll have you begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Holbrook here.
Counselor Donovan here.
Counselor Caterina.
Here.
Counselor St. Clair.
Here.
Counselor Blaze.
Here.
Counselor Benedict.
Here.
Chairman Sullivan.
Here. Okay, general public comments. Public's welcome to comment on anything that they would like. Three minutes, name and address, please. Sir, your three minutes has started.
My name is Michael Doyle. I own ThelmaToday.me. I called the DEA's office in Boston four times and left a message. I left it for Tony Pettigrew and then I called Laura Harris in Washington DC. Today, yesterday I called back and spoke to Kathy, the secretary for Michael Ferguson, the special agent in charge. And I asked this question. Is there any protocol that prohibits a DEA agent assigned by the town of Scarborough from the police department from having an affair with a confidential informant and compromising a case? And I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Ferguson or one of his people. My information is that a police officer was assigned to the case, slept with the CI. The CI got pregnant, he left his wife, and married the CI. This case was three Class A felonies for drug dealing. The case was compromised to a point where it was settled, my information is, on time served and dismissed. And I'm letting the council know that I own ThelmaToday.me. I've got 24 stories about the police department in Scarborough. And I'm going to continue to pursue this. I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Ferguson to see if there's a page in the operation manual that prohibits this or condones it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone next? Name and address, three minutes.
Well, what I have to say isn't going to be as figured out, but nonetheless, I was at the candidate, meet the candidates' meeting last night and it was very nice. I enjoyed it and I enjoyed listening to everyone. The one thing that I need to comment on is that there is a problem in town with the voters being apathetic. Nobody comes out to vote. They don't vote. And why is this? What is it that makes the people not want to come out and vote? Because there are important issues. I can't figure it out. It's one of the most important things that an American can do is to vote. And the only thing that I can think of is they think, well, it's politics as usual. Why bother? And that could be. But the council seems to also want to take into consideration these apathetic voters. And I don't understand it because I've said this before about a rumor started on Higgins Beach about a private citizen. Over the weekend, a rumor about my husband, which wasn't true. And these people call and say they're anonymous. They won't give their names. Or they give their names and say they want to remain anonymous. There's something that's just not right about this. Those people, and maybe they're here tonight, maybe they're at home, I don't know. The people who call and don't stand up for what they believe in and make up a lie. My father, who is a World War II disabled veteran, my son, who is a wounded warrior Marine retired, would call those people cowards. And that's what I'm here to say tonight. They don't have to lie. We come up here, we stand up here, we look you all in the face, we tell you what you think, whether you like us or not like us. But at least we do it. So the people who have to lie, don't listen to them. Don't take them into consideration. They're not worth it. They're cowards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I use some of my free minutes getting out of the aisle there. My name is Bud Hanson. I live in the condo at Stony Creek Drive. A couple of things I want to talk very quickly. First off is that I had a very narrowing experience personally just a couple of weeks ago in trying to cross Route 1. I live at Stony Creek and to get to Route 1, I have to walk up Commerce Drive. There were walk lights at Commerce Drive. And as I, as I test them, they're good for about 20 seconds for me to walk across that interstate when the traffic's going north and south on Route 1. As I push the button, which is on the backside of the pole, which is hard to see to walk across, the lights flash. And I have to wait because the guys and gals who want to make the red light step on the gas. So I'm back on strike. My light is flashing now, I only get 15 seconds to get across the street. So I finally get over in the far end of the street on the fast side going south. And as you know, you can turn right on red. There's four opportunities there to go. The light doesn't show everybody who's walking out there. As I got into that line, two cars came by and they turned on the vehicle because I was in their way. I was able to get across. I walked in because I go a little behind the high school and walk around the park. I do it often. I find that, and I came back that same day, and I was leaving now from the park side going over to get on to Commerce Drive. And I stepped off the street, the horns are blowing. I get over with the traffic coming up from the south with a person who wanted to turn right onto Commerce Drives. I let them go and I'm in the street. Traffic has stopped and they're waving to me, watch out, look out, you're in trouble. And I got across the street and fortunately for me, I made it and so did the driver. I cut down to the white buildings on the corner and the person who was driving couldn't get into the parking area. And I knocked on the wooden, thank you very much. And I got the rectal expression as well as they told me, if you only cross Route 1, why don't you move? So I'm thinking, this is not really a police issue. I think maybe it's a transportation issue or a safety issue. And I don't know who to go to.
Point the way.
I don't think the police is at fault with this. I think a very easy solution would be to add another five or six seconds of walk light. Is that possible? However, as we know, when you have a solution to a problem, you create another problem because of solution. So I understand that. My other concern was, my time is running out, is I've been looking and reading newspaper articles on the hockey center. And just a couple of quick words. Please, no hockey center in Metrofaldin Oak Hill. Maybe, I believe in hockey, I played for it in the backyard and they play football and I'll beat them, man. My oldest brother Ralph played with Gary Merrill's hockey team over in Cape Willisburg. So I know the sport is very exciting at the very beginning. Later on, as time goes by, I'll tell you about an experience that I had personally on the John Fitch Highway in Pittsburgh with George Wallace's planetarium and hockey rink. It was successful for just a couple of years. It finally failed. Rock concerts came, the dust came, and there was no, not enough restrooms and I used the outside facilities, which is grass. Both men and women. Across the street where I live, it was a three apartment complex. It was an absolute disaster. So I think probably the time comes to decide what we're going to do for the hockey rink. I like the idea of a hockey rink, but please, not in Metrofaldin Oak Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Next, anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll close. If you're going to speak, let's stand up so you can be recognized, please.
My name is Mo Erickson. I live on the Pine Point Road. I have two issues I want to bring up. The first is the hockey rink. I think it's a great idea, but two things, I agree with the gentleman. It should not be in Oak Hill. We have lots of different areas we can put it. Also, I know that they're looking, they're hoping to get a low cost lease from the town. And I just hope you don't do that. We shouldn't be giving anyone a break on leased land. If you want to do that, then lower everyone's taxes. How's that for a break? More, more people would benefit from that. The second thing I wanted to address is I often get the feeling that there are people in the town who have their own vision for the town and nobody else gets really to say any part of it. I think what the woman said earlier about apathetic voters is true. I wish we had more people who were involved in the town. I'm talking specifically about the big renovation plan and rejuvenation plan for the Dunston area. And in the article, in the leader, you talk about the eventual result of this gradual change will be a modern and active mixed-use neighborhood. I can tell you, I live in Pine Point and I don't want a mixed-use neighborhood. So please, do it somewhere in Dunston. Don't start coming down to Pine Point. I just want a neighborhood. I don't want boutiques and coffee shops in every single neighborhood in Scarborough. I think it would be nice just to have a plain old neighborhood. And I think to have this big revision of Dunston Corner and put in roads and a little mini Route 1 on the backside like people have talked about is absurd. And I think if you told more people what was in the works, I like to think that more people would come out because I don't think a lot of people want their neighborhood to be turned into a mixed-use zone. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you'd have to go up to the mic.
Suzanne Foley Ferguson, 331 Black Point Road. The council is set to take up a cell tower ordinance and overlay map tonight. And you will be making a decision, if you make a decision, about hundreds of people's property without even notifying them that you're changing their zone. That you're actually changing their residential zone by permitting an industrial use. In my heart, I know that's wrong. And in your hearts, I think you know that's wrong. Whether it's legally wrong, well, that's up to the lawyers and the courts to decide, isn't it? But I know it's wrong because people work hard and invest in their homes as safe havens and financial investments. They have a right to know when decisions about their private property are being made. And that is why the state has a law, MRSA Title 30A, Section 4352, which requires that a town notify any person whose property is going to be changed if they're in a residential zone and they're going to be permitting an industrial zone. I'm sure there's all kinds of legal arguments why we may or may not be following that. But in my heart, and I think in your heart, you know what the intent of that law was. And that is to protect private property. You know, oftentimes courts review these things. They appeal decisions made by municipalities. They look at the intent of the law. They don't just look, because that's why we have two argue, two lawyers looking at it. Right now, it could be argued that towers are currently prohibited in residential zones. Well, yes, except there's that special exception. But I know the intent is very clear. Your sole responsibility as land use regulators is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. And that includes property values. And nothing in the Telecom Act, nothing, preempts your jurisdiction on that responsibility. And despite 704's limitations for environmental effects for our office, you can deny a tower, you cannot deny a tower. This is not an application you're doing. You're doing an overlay zone. You are doing zoning. And you can consider health effects because that is your sole responsibility as our elected officials to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And we are asking you to do that. I drove around my house this weekend and I took screenshots for four days in all the different locations of some of the overlays over by Proust Neck and Pine Point where my friends, I listened to, I watched NPR News, I texted people, I made phone calls. There is no gaps in coverage. At least they're not significant. They're not substantial. There are no gaps in those two overlay zones. Maybe there are on the other side of the turnpike. There probably are. I can't, I can't speak to that. But what I'm saying is if you guys decide this without notifying people, you're making the decision, you're rushing into it. There's a lot of good ideas that could be on the table if you took your time and did the work and you did it for the benefit of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ace Holden. I'm on Snowberry Drive. And I'd like to speak briefly about the memorandum of understanding for the hockey arena. I, I think they've done a great job in planning, planning a hockey arena. They all accept one thing. They hope and pray that the town will give them some of their parking spaces in the town municipal area. They want, the first proposal was to dig up the parking lot right behind us. Another proposal would be another parking lot, maybe by the tennis courts. I've heard different rumors of where it might be located. We just got through bonding Wentworth School for $39 million. I don't have any idea how much of that was for the new parking lot in front of it. But I want to believe that those spaces were needed. If they were needed for the existing use of the complex, then there are no parking lots left to be destroyed that we are still paying for. So I, I think giving away space or renting space, which reduces the parking, would be a very poor idea. The alternative might be to fill in more land behind the football field or to find perimeters or beside the park or whatever. But why take apart things that we spent big money for to develop? The arena will be used 17 hours a day. There'll be traffic in and out every hour for 17 hours. That's what they're saying, that they're going to rent it for 17 hours a day. And the school right now is pretty busy with activity with hockey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Jones. I live at 14 Acorn Lane. But I'm here tonight as Jones and Warren, representing the Proust Neck Community Organization. And we want to talk about the first item on the agenda, which is the proposed zoning amendment for the wireless towers and facilities. And we, we do support the effort and progress that's been made in this regard. And we do acknowledge the need for better wireless coverage in Scarborough. But we have three proposed changes that we would recommend and believe, we believe would strengthen the zoning ordinance and amendment. The first is, we believe that the applicant, the amendment should have a performance standard for the applicant to show that the transmission tower would not have an adverse impact on the environment or wildlife in the area. And we think that that should be on the burden of the applicant to show that there would be no negative impact to the environment and local wildlife. The second amendment, we would, would require that the applicant upgrade existing towers and existing facilities first before submitting an application to build a new tower. So that if Black Point, the tower on Black Point Station can be raised 10 feet to accommodate new antennas, that that should be done before a new tower is built anywhere down in that area. And the third proposal we would have would be to have the applicant show, be required to show the necessity of a tower and have, and allow the zoning board and/or the planning board the ability to weigh the impact in relation to the population density in the area to be served. So that they can do a balancing test as for the necessity and the need of a tower vis a vis the, the population of the area to be served and the density of the population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gina Christie, One Meadowwood Drive in Scarborough. I just have a couple of issues I just want to mention real quickly. First of all, I do appreciate all the thought and consideration that is going into planning placement of cell towers. But as was said earlier, I really hope that you do remember that your primary priority should be the health, welfare, property values of your townspeople that you represent. And I urge you not to make any hasty decisions if it needs to be tabled. This is an issue that probably shouldn't have even come this far. As was also said earlier, existing towers should be improved upon and boosted to see what that does for reception. There are other measures that should be taken before we even consider placing new towers. And any citizens that are going to be impacted by zoning changes should definitely be informed of any such changes. Especially since I believe I'm going to be one of those citizens. And as far as the hockey rink goes, you know, I am, I love skating. I'm all for having a rink in town. But I, I do really hope that if, if the facility is built, that it's a facility that does have multiple uses, not strictly as a hockey rink. You know, so that everyone in town can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public here. General comments. Minutes of October 1st, 2014. With approval?
Second.
Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Proposed, none. Adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Okay. I have treasures warrants that are here. I'll sign them as the meeting goes on.
Under O Business Order Number 1453, as a second reading on the proposed changes to Chapter 405, the town of Scarborough zoning ordinance to create a transmission tower overlay district and to update the performance standards thereto. This item had been tabled from the September 17th, 2014 Town Council Meeting.
Okay, Dan will, the town planner will go over this briefly. And we've had two workshops on this and it's been out to the public for, I think, two weeks now. So we'll have Dan go over the highlights of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, I've been before you a number of times now. You've been working to craft the right wireless and cell tower standards for Scarborough. Last Thursday evening, October 9th, this council had a very comprehensive workshop on the latest proposal. And this latest proposal is a much stricter and more specific proposal than what was passed by the council at first reading back in early summer in June. And this proposal that was reviewed last Thursday has a stepped priority process. As mentioned during comments a few minutes ago, encouraging and requiring existing towers to first be examined for adding antennas. And then applicants can move to new towers within industrial zones as the second preferred approach. And then move to, to telecommunications facilities, which are antennas on top of buildings to provide more stealth and screened antennas. And then lastly, consider new towers in the overlay district, which was presented to you last Thursday, which is a more specific, limited area in the community in the rural and residential zones where, where's towers would be allowed as a last option. At the conclusion of your workshop last Thursday, the council provided some additional direction to staff and to further refine the proposal that was reviewed on Thursday. So I wanted to kind of touch on what has been updated. to kind of touch on what has been updated since that Thursday proposal, last week's proposal, and review those additional changes, given where we are at this point. And so in your packages that were provided to you last Friday, as well as available for the public last Friday, there's the proposed amendment dated October 10th, which is Friday's version. And there's also a memo that highlights what those changes are. So one of the, I'm just gonna quickly walk through the memo and then turn it back to the council. One of the changes to, was to give the planning board more discretion on transmission tower height, to give the board the ability to actually reduce the, the allowed tower height. Right now, it's proposed to be a hundred and thirty feet. And there's a change on page three that it would allow the planning board to see photo simulations or balloon tests of where a tower would be on a site, and give the board the ability to actually require the, the height of the tower to be less, to be less visible from abutting properties, abutting roadways, abutting public spaces. So that's a change to give the planning board more tools and discretion in that regard. Another thing that was brought up at the workshop last week was to give the planning board, again, more discretion and flexibility on requiring a larger setback than the version presented Thursday. And so that language has been added into the proposal to give the planning board the ability to require up to a three-hundred percent of the tower height setback within the overlay. And that's something the council was looking for, again, to, to even provide more separation from abutting properties and views, et cetera. On pages four and five, we added some language to give the planning board more authority to require key landscaping and vegetative screening to be placed in easement so that it can't be changed in the future. Because in some sites, there could be trees and corridors along a roadway that are integral to, to buffer the, the tower. So it gives the board the ability to protect those, those corridors and those, that vegetation while the tower is in existence. On page five, the council had expressed some concern about kind of the visual impact review process and making sure the planning board had enough discretion to require a visual impact assessment and then require adjustments in where facilities are located on, on large properties. So that language was improved to, to make it clear that that visual assessment happens first, and then the planning board can instruct the applicant to adjust the tower location, tower height, tower buffering to, again, to, to screen these as, as extensively as possible. Another addition is requirement for public notification for any applications that go to the planning board or the zoning board for review. That was added to the language to make it clear that when an application is submitted, that abutters within five-hundred feet of a proposal are notified as to when that application is going to, to which board and, and the agenda for that meeting. And lastly, on page eight, the council was interested in having the planning board play a role in the review of any wireless facility that's proposed. So we've added language to the proposal that gives the planning board a step in a, in a review period and recommendation to the zoning board before an application goes to the zoning board. There are some telecommunications facilities that would, the zoning board would be the primary review authority, but this adds that the planning board also participates in the review. It would, it would be a two-step process, given the, the planning board's familiarity with these types of applications. That was requested by the council. So that's a overview of what's been updated since your workshop. And as I mentioned, the version that includes all those changes is the October 10th version that you may want to work off of once you're discussing this matter. And the version that's provided at your seats also has a effective date of November 15th. That was asked by the council to have this not take effect immediately to give the planning board the ability to have a, a workshop to review their administration of, of this ordinance and get familiar with it in case there are applicants that come forward in the near future. So that's been added. And the, the planning board has scheduled a workshop for before their next meeting to take up the matter. So that, that is in the works, and they will be, they will be doing that should the council adopt some version of this this evening. So with that introduction, I'm certainly gonna be here for questions and comments as the meeting and discussion continues.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Public comment on Order 1453. Anyone who'd like to speak to this order? Cell phone ordinance. Three minutes. Name and address, please.
Julie Hopper, Spurwink Road in Scarborough. Your sole responsibility as land use regulators is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. This includes property values. Nothing in the Telecom Act preempts your jurisdiction on that responsibility. How many of you on the council, or on the planning board for that matter, have read the cell tower book by Blake Levitt? Did you know that there are solid case laws that says communities can set specific signal strength, i.e. lower in vehicle versus higher in dwelling, for instance, and more case law that recognizes towns can write superior RF safety regulations? That means going above and beyond for the greater good of the community. There was a recent Wall Street Journal piece on how many towers are out of compliance, even with the high thermal base regulation. No one monitors. When was the last time the towers in Scarborough were monitored, and to whom do they report? The town may assume that you have to bring a hundred percent coverage to town, however you don't. You may think you cannot consider health, environmental effects at all, however you can within certain limits. And the town may think that they cannot be held accountable, which it can. How many of you are aware that there could be grounds for a lawsuit with commission members named individually because of creating a blanket regulation for the entire town that involves exposures to a non-genotoxin RF? The same is true for churches and private landowners that lease space to telecom providers. There is no status of limitation on health claims and EMF damage. Everyone with a stake in siting decisions can be sued if adverse effects turn up. We know the town can't unreasonably discriminate among providers, but towns can and usually do require co-location on existing towers. That is reasonable discrimination. Even if a carrier argues that they want a better location, the town is not, not required to provide the carriers the absolute best location, just a reasonable one. If another carrier is already providing service from an existing location, then it is probably good enough. The town can also require monitoring to make sure that all facilities meet the maximum FCC admissions guidelines, no matter how many providers are co-located on a particular site. Typically, very few people at the location level, at the local level, understand that the responsibility for compliance monitoring has shifted to municipalities. Great Barrington, Massachusetts, was one of the first communities in the country to incorporate the requirements for RF engineering detail, as well as thorough monitoring and proof of liability coverage for the town into zoning regulations. This has been used by many communities as a template since. Blake Levitt has been thoroughly entrenched in this for years and has assisted many communities put together reasonable protections. The consultant that was hired for Scarborough was a third party, but worked for wireless industry. Blake, Blake Levitt is also a third-party consultant, but works for herself and for communities that want to do the right thing for the health and safety of their citizens. You owe it to us to use the resources available that will gain us the best result while not being sucked into who works for the industry. Know your rights as a community when setting forth. In conclusion, start by increasing the height of the towers in the industrial zones. Live with that for a period, and then reevaluate. You will be surprised how doing that much will affect the, the gap. Don't do more than is needed. Baby steps, please. Gaps in coverage that are not significant or substantial can be filled with putty, not a whole coating of mud on the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Laura Hannan from Seventeen Powderhorn Drive. And like Julie, I think we should do baby steps, I mean, raising the height of the towers. Existing towers would be a great way to start. I do think the towers should stay in the industrial areas and out of residential and rural farming areas. I'm opposed to the stealth towers or mini-towers on top of utility poles. I think this all needs to stay in the industrial areas, and we really need to, you know, work slowly here, because I'm concerned about, you know, health effects, environmental effects, property values. This is a whole range of, of issues here. So I really urge you to be careful and, and think long and hard about this decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Ann Foley Ferguson, 331 Blackpoint Road. So I'm crossing my fingers that you'll postpone this because we've got a lot of people who've already just presented great ideas with you. And I know that I, I've talked with at least four of the councilors and provided some information as well. I heard Dan say at least about ten changes since the public hearing. That's only for one workshop, ten changes. This is not the same ordinance that was heard at the public hearing. This is a whole new ordinance. Some might even argue that it's a new ordinance and should go to public hearing. Again, I'm gonna reiterate that you're making decisions on people's properties who have not even been notified. I started to say that I took pictures of my phone, which is Verizon. I forgot to tell you, I got a friend also to take pictures. She has AT&amp;T. She went down to Pine Point also and got some photos of her service and where she is. There's no significant gaps with her phone either. And one of my suggestions is to require that the applicant must show there are significant or substantial gaps. They must prove that before any towers are considered. All of these changes that are being made are great, and they're really, really good, but you're not done yet. Your job is to protect us. You are the municipal body to do that. And you can do that by slowing this ordinance down to get it right. Hiring Blake Levitt as a outside consultant to, to get it right. There's other ways. Maybe there's gonna be amendments made. But to push this through when it's not completed and when we're not really confident, because there's an election coming up, is really irresponsible. Julie mentioned the fact that one out of every five tower is not in FCC compliance. And that's correct. And not only that, eleven workers have already died on towers thus far in 2014. And according to OSHA, it's thirteen died in 2013. They're having, actually, tonight, they're having a webcast, OSHA is, about how they can prevent some of these deaths. There's a lot to this cell tower stuff. Baby stuff is exactly what should be taken, not this overall approach. And so I urge the council to please consider postponing this decision so you get planning board input, more citizen input, and perhaps even your own amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liam Summers, Holmes Road. This council spent nearly twelve months in deciding ordinances that would protect sparse population of shorebirds and make sure that they were safe. And in doing so, many of you came back and said, "We rushed some of those decisions, and we wish we could have taken that back. We wish we could have had a do-over." Now you're faced with a decision that affects the health and welfare of your entire population, of citizens, and wildlife as well. This is your chance for the do-over. This is your chance to be thoughtful and take a moment and step back and say, "Let's not rush this decision. Let's get this one right." So I urge you to do that. Reflect on what you said coming out of that Plover debacle, and where you said, "I wish we could do that over. I wish we had that to go back and be more thoughtful." And apply that here. You have that opportunity now. I don't claim to be an expert on any of the medical effects of RF, but I'm not sure that you guys are either. And that's something that we should take our time with so that we don't end up with lawsuits and, and issues down the road. Take the time, be thoughtful. Nobody's cell phones are going anywhere. And, and you won't have to come out of this decision saying, "I wish we had a do-over." So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Laura Rouvene, 14th Street. So I'm the friend that Ms. Ann was talking about. And so when I am on the beach, I can get online, I can, on Pine Point Beach, I can get online, I can receive phone calls, I can make phone calls, I can download music, I can do everything on the beach where there's no cell towers. And I can do it in my house. I've, I've never had a problem there. I went up by the marsh because oftentimes by the marsh, it will go dead. But I did it for three days in a row, and I, I always got whatever I needed to do. So I don't know that, you know, we need as many as they say we need. We might need some in other areas. But I just think that we need to just be careful on how many we are getting. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Now I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? A move, adoption of the amendment that was approved at the first reading. You have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Are you the first reading?
Yes.
Or the document in front of us?
Yes.
Councilor Donovan. We've come a long way from the first reading. Months of work, many hearings. We have before us an October 10th document. And I think to procedurally place this matter properly before the Town Council is time, that it would be appropriate, and I will make a motion to amend, to replace the first reading draft with the October 10th, 2014 draft distributed to us and the public last Friday. Okay. So you've made a motion to replace the original draft with the October 10th draft. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Benedict.
I don't want to put a wet blanket on this, but I find in getting a ten-page handout that I have not had available ample time to sit down and read word for word, that there's no way that I'm in a position to do a affirmative vote on this. And I turn around on page four and just citing one of the problems I have, is we discussed a twenty-five acre parcel. Didn't agree to it, but we're discussing that. And now I read in here, minimum lot size from twenty-five acres to a minimum of five acres and a setback difference equivalent to a hundred and fifty percent of the total tower height. That's not been any part of our discussions, as I remember. And I, I don't like, I don't like changes being crept up, crept up and jammed down my throat. I am not comfortable with that at all. And until I have the time to read a ten-page document, which is not gonna be in the next fifteen minutes, I'm gonna vote no for it.
Tom, when was this prepared?
Well, I think what Councilor Benedict's looking at, and I have the privilege of being able to look over his shoulder, is the, the draft that was provided to you tonight. Substantively, it is exactly the same as the one produced and distributed on Friday. So there's no changes. The only difference is, it's clean. It's accepted all the changes. So I would just point out that though it, there hasn't been a lot of time for review, it's certainly not been provided to you first time this evening.
Right. I received it on Friday also, and I meant I had the weekend and till tonight. And I meant I had the weekend and till tonight to go through it.
This is the first time I've seen anything between about twenty-five acres and going down to five. I don't remember any time that that was part of any...
Well, I assure you, staff has taken no liberties. Anything in this document has come from this council. And we've done our best to draft and capture those thoughts, but we've not taken any liberties to add any elements to this ordinance.
Jessica.
I might just add that I do remember that. It was a product of the workshop. And if you might recall, at the end of the workshop, Tom had been taking notes on things that we had a general consensus to and was going to incorporate what those items were into the document you have in front of you. And that is what was released on Friday. The more singular items, there wasn't a consensus on. He, as far as I know, has worked with individual counselors on. But there was a little kind of consensus that there were a certain number of items and he did go over them. One of those was the twenty-five acres. That was something that I had actually brought up. What that allows for is, especially in the RF districts, is these are, again, rural farms, especially around my area. The initial startup to put a tower on site is twenty-five acres. However, after that, person that owns the property would have the ability to still utilize that property, maybe for an accessory building, like another barn, or those sorts of activities. So it only, the goal was to guarantee the twenty-five acres initially, but if someone so chooses to use it after, it shrinks to five acres around the site. So again, if that helps you any, that was something that was, actually came from me. But if that adds any clarity. Talking about the document now, or you can come back to me? I don't care.
Let me just, Council St. Clair was next.
I have an amendment, but it's not the time for that, I guess. We're talking about, I am not going to support this as it is. I'll save my comments for in a couple minutes. But I'm not comfortable with the way that this is written. And I don't, I don't think we're ready, I don't think we're there yet.
Okay, Council Katerina, did you have something?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay, Council Donovan.
I just wanted to make a procedural comment so that we're all on the same page. The motion to amend to adopt the October tenth draft distributed to the public and to ourselves last week is to make it the main motion, not to adopt the main motion. If people wish to make amendments to the main motion after the October tenth draft is, if it's passed, becomes the main motion, that would then follow this point in the proceeding. I just wanted to make sure no one was confused.
I don't think we're confused. I think we're pretty clear.
Okay, discussion. Council Benedict.
I blaze. You all know that I've always been in favor of just raising tower heights. It's my opinion that that's what we should do. Raise the tower heights in the industrial zones to two hundred feet, allow co-location. End of discussion. Put it into place and then deal with it from there. Every day that goes by, more and more information comes about that I feel very, very uncomfortable I wanna hear how the planning board feels about this. I wanna hear what the planning board wants to set up as far as standards are concerned. I was gonna make some amendments tonight, but I'm not gonna make any amendments. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for this. We're not ready. We are not ready to turn this on. We're not doing our job. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
Council Katerina.
All right, now I'll say something. I feel that we are ready to move forward on this. I know that there are some amendments that people have suggested that I would be willing to discuss and work on with this document. I will remind the public that this has been on the ordinance committee since March of It's been discussed, hashed, rehashed. We've had workshops. We've gotten input. We've gotten emails from people, both pro and con. And frankly, I support moving forward with this, so that's where I am with amendments.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, amendments. Are there any amendments to this?
If I don't bring forth this amendment, I'm gonna lose it anyway.
Uh, Council St. Clair?
Um, I feel like I'm not, I don't, I'm not feeling comfortable with this at all. But the amendment that I'm looking at and am open to discussion was drafted today, so not a lot of you have had time to look at it. And obviously, the public has not had time to look at it. But where I'm going with it is basically, I'm not gonna read this entire thing, but number one, it completely gets rid of stealth, stealth areas in town. I don't want there to be stealth. That whole wording makes me extremely uncomfortable. And also, I asked them, staff, to prepare this with no more of the boxes on top of the telephone poles. I'm not comfortable with that either. I'm afraid that those are gonna end up near our residential areas or in our residential areas, and we're not gonna even know it. And I don't, I think that's unacceptable and I would use the word sneaky. So that is my amendment. I feel like if I don't put forth this amendment, even though I'm uncomfortable with going forward with this, that this amendment is not going to get in, and that's a problem in itself. So I feel like I don't have any other choice except to bring this amendment forward at this time.
So, kind of point of order, so at this point, you've moved your motion for an amendment?
Please.
And I will second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Who can explain this?
Yeah, if I could add some further clarity, and Dan certainly knows more about it, but essentially, to accomplish what Council St. Clair articulated, which is remove stealth and any opportunity for antenna systems, if you will, on the top of utility poles, we propose a comprehensive amendment that would effectively remove telecommunications facilities from the ordinance altogether. And that's what this ordinance amendment does. Yeah, I don't know if you can offer further clarity?
Yeah, and just to build on that. Telecommunication facilities are defined as the wireless antennas that are attached to a building or structure or pole, as Council St. Clair has commented on, a telephone pole in the instance she's talking about. So that's what a telecommunications facility is, an antenna attached to something else. And that's been considered stealth because it could be on top of a roof of an office building or in a church steeple or things of that nature. They're currently allowed in town in a more limited way than the proposal would allow for it, meaning that right now telecommunications facilities are allowed on municipal properties, municipal buildings, and also places of worship. The town uses telecommunications facilities for some of its own communication, not necessarily wireless communication that the carriers would be interested in. So that's what a telecommunications facility is. And the amendments that Council St. Clair offering would strike in the entire October tenth proposal, all telecommunications facilities. So it wouldn't be allowed in any zones and wouldn't be allowed in any context. And that would eliminate what she's concerned about.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Council Benedict.
Dan, if you could answer for me. We were discussing at the last meeting workshop about having antennas on top of the electric lines.
Transmission lines?
Yeah, I'm not quite clear what they were. But they were going to be placed up like along...
Yeah, there's two different opportunities for that. One is on the high voltage transmission lines, the taller poles for transmission lines. And then there's the other opportunity, which is on the regular distribution utility poles. You know, the poles are more widespread within the community that provide power to houses, power to neighborhoods. So both of those, antennas attached to either of those would be considered telecommunications facilities in zoning ordinance. So by striking the allowance for telecommunications facilities, you're prohibiting both of those scenarios.
Okay, because there are Blumbery Lane, Thunder Road, Rock Turn Road, goes under the wires, I believe.
Yeah.
So we're cutting off our noses by the face as far as keeping them out of RF districts. If they went along, I'm just supporting the same thing with no stealth. Because if they're, if they're put in there on the lines, that's not doing the people any favors moving in there. I mean, it would seem that people would know when they bought the house or whatever, that yes, they're there. But I don't believe that that's necessarily true to try and figure out what someone's gonna know going into a house. So I would support the amendment with no additions in that particular situation.
Okay, any comments?
I'll comment. I do greatly appreciate what Council St. Clair is doing, although I don't agree with it in its entirety. I do believe you'll find there is likely to be another amendment this evening that does have some similarities to it. So in the event that this one doesn't pass, I think you might find that you could support the upcoming amendment. For me, I do agree, I think it has little DNAs or whatever, the pole antennas. I do support getting rid of those. I don't think they do, I think they're unsightly. Certainly following down, you know, poles into neighborhoods and stuff, that's likely not a good place for them, like I said, especially where the town has done some pretty extensive work over the last years at moving away from utility poles and going everything, being underground and trying to get underground wiring. So again, I can appreciate, you know, moving away from some of that technology. However, I do think there is a place for stealth antenna on the high transmission lines. I think that there is an application there for it. I know stealth is kind of a, not nice word for it, but I wish it was called something else. However, I do believe that I can only take into consideration the visual impacts of something and the arguments of, you know, it's an eyesore and how much it could depreciate the value. Those tools are how you mitigate those issues. And I would hate to lose those tools. You know, again, if you can put it into sieves, you no longer have the eyesore. So again, I don't support it on the other end. There's half of your amendment that I do support, and then I think you'll find that there's support enough to at least do the DNS antennas. So I won't be supporting it, but...
My two cents on it is DAS system is just a waste of time and money. We lose poles all the time, whether it's a car, you know, snow, ice, lines go down, power goes out, and so won't those DAS. And like you said, they're ugly. And if this amendment was only dealing with the DAS, I'd vote in favor of it also. So that's just my two cents. Anyone else?
Council Donovan.
Just so you'll know, the DAS is the acronym for systems that sit on the conventional telephone poles. And they just connect from some distance away, pole to pole, and it permits you to get signals strength to areas that might not otherwise be reachable. It's an expensive process. It's not favored. We have a big town geographically, so it's probably not something that, when you think about the move away from above-ground structures, municipal structures on our roadways, you can see how that would make some sense. To throw the whole thing out, the stealth opportunities, I think, are terrific. They meet our goals of not having a visual impact on the landscape, not being noticeable and therefore not affecting the property values. Those are the land use planning tools that we're entitled to control. So I would, I would favor, I don't favor this broader motion, but I would favor one that was more narrowly drawn.
Council Holbrooke?
I have, I thought, I forgot about it. Sorry. It goes under the tools too, for me, is there's potential here to avoid construction of a full tower. Again, you know, if we're allowing some application for these types of antennas, whether that's transmission lines and those sorts of things, you could potentially avoid the need, immediate need of a full-scale tower somewhere. So again, I'm trying to be a little cognizant of, you know, I know there's not a lot of warm thoughts about having a ton of towers around, but maybe we can mitigate some issues with a handful of antennas.
Right. Chairman Sullivan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That exact reasoning is why I feel like we're pushing, I understand we've had this in front of us for a while, but that exact reasoning is why I still feel like we still need to have more conversations about this, that we're not there yet. We're still like Counselor Blaze says, we're still getting more information, more data, more facts. I mean, I realize that I am the ordinance chair. This was my responsibility. I should've gotten it right the first time, and I should've made sure it was right before I sent it to the full council. I take full responsibility for that. But that being said, I can't in good faith, I just feel like that's my, that's the reasoning we're having, why we're struggling down on this end with pushing this through, not pushing this through, but moving forward with this because there's still more conversations that need to be had. There's still so many ideas out there. This is not something that I wanna see. We have a beautiful town, you know, and I don't wanna, we have a beautiful town to protect, with a lot of really incredible people in it, including our children. Okay, I'm gonna stop talking now, I swear. But I just, that's just why I feel like we're pushing.
Okay. Something else down the side? Everybody all set? More discussion, any just more discussion down this way?
Okay. The amendment that Council St. Clair presented, has had a second. And all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, is there any further amendments?
Yes.
Council Katerina?
Tagging along on this, I would like to propose, make a motion to amend subsection two, standards for telecommunications facilities by adding a standard B as stated below. And it would be, insert... And it would be inserted as B, utility poles and transmission lines. For the purposes of these performance standards, telecommunications facilities shall be allowed to be attached or mounted on high voltage public utility transmission line poles and structures subject to Board of Appeals and/or Planning Board Review and Approval, but shall not be permitted to be attached or mounted on distribution scale utility poles and structures. Um, and then the subsequent subsections will be renumbered as necessary. That is my motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, the reason, uh, the reason I, I put this in is, uh, I agree with Counselor Holbrook. I think that, um, these DAS systems, uh, what I've seen of them, I've done a lot of travel in the United States, spent a lot of time in Chicago with my daughter, and they've got all sorts of goofy things on poles out there. Um, I don't want us to see, I don't wanna see us going down that road here in Scarborough. Um, I, I would love to see all of our utilities underground, but I know that that's just, it's not gonna happen. Um, but we're, as a town with new developments, whatever, we're asking developers put it underground. I just, I don't wanna go down this road, uh, with a DAS, so that's why I've proposed this.
Anyone else? Counsel Donovan?
I understand that it's expensive and, uh, rarely used, and would not be, uh, particularly valuable as a tool for us to promote better cell coverage. So, uh, I think the, uh, the kind of visual impact outweighs any possible benefits that might arise from this, and so I support it.
Counsel Holbrook?
Uh, so I'm just gonna say ditto to my previous comments, um, and I'll support the amendment.
Um, and I'm just gonna say, like I said before, I don't feel that it's, uh, reliable enough, um, source to bother with, the AAS, so, um, why, why should we have it in there? Anyone down this end? No one's, that's it, huh?
Oh, Jim.
Oh, Jim. Uh, then Counsel Benedict?
In conjunction with the, the ten-page item, this is the first I've seen of this, either one of these items, and where it states in B, utility poles and transmission lines, I guess I'd like to have a clearer idea of where these are.
Okay. Um, Dan, Dan, can you explain this, please?
Uh, the intent behind the amendment that Counsel Katerina offered is to not allow, um, wireless antennas on any utility pole or local utility pole that's a distribution, for a distribution line, a pole that serves all the electric and phone and all the various utilities throughout the community, um, but to only allow them on the high voltage transmission lines. The corridors that you mentioned earlier, uh, Counsel Benedict, uh, off of Broad Turn Road, there's a, there's the CMP corridor, those are the high voltage transmission lines and poles. There's also one, um, that goes through the Pleasant Hill industrial area, um, that goes over the connector to 295. So those would be the only areas where, under this amendment, um, antennas could be attached to the poles. They wouldn't be allowed to be attached to any other utility poles in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any further discussion? Or discussion? With no further discussion, um, there's a motion to amend, uh, from Counsel Katerina, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, further amendments? Are there any further amendments? Counsel Blaze?
Uh, I wanna make a, an amendment to allow towers in the industrial, light industrial districts to be 200 feet.
A second.
Okay. Discussion? Oh, go ahead, please.
Can I throw in the second one at the same time?
Well, no, one at a time.
Okay.
Look, you can do another one in a minute.
Just for the Counsel Benedict, um, at the request of Counsel Blaze, I have prepared this amendment and possibly two others that may be offered. Uh, the first one that he just offered is, the first one you see, amendment number one.
Okay.
Could, could, I'm sorry. Could you have maybe Dan just go over this for, for us?
Well, I just thought everybody was touching up on reading this. Um, Dan, could you speak to this one, please?
I don't have it.
Um, Counsel Blaze, that, uh, staff prepare-
I don't have it.
Amendment to allow for taller towers in industrial zones, um, and more specifically to treat tower height differently in the industrial zone and light industrial zone than the overlay, um, and to allow taller towers up to 200 feet tall in the industrial districts. And that's what's shown in these amendments. So it's separating the height for industrial under, um, A2 there, and it gives the planning board some flexibility, some discretion, much like elsewhere in the ordinance where the planning board can, uh, require the, the tower to be a bit lower, to down to 180 feet, um, to minimize or lessen the visual impact of a tall tower. In particular, we, uh, to avoid having the tower have to be lit. Uh, when towers get into the range of 200 feet, um, that's when the FBA typically requires them to be lit, which could be something based on location that, uh, the town may wanna avoid, or planning board may wanna avoid. So that gives some flexibility on that upper, that upper height and being adjusted down. So, I hope that it instills what, uh, what Counsel Blaze wanted to, to achieve with the amendment.
I'd, I'd just like to make another comment.
Yes.
Um, I met with Dan and Tom yesterday and discussed this, and I did ask Dan to see if we could get a new, uh, DCS coverage map, uh, showing a 200 foot tower in the Pleasant Hill industrial area. And now that I think of it, I think we oughta have a 200 foot tower in every industrial area in town and get a new coverage map and see what it looks like for the whole town. And as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't be voting on this at all, if we see something like that.
Okay, um, I just, I, well, Dan's up there? I, I have one question of Dan. With a, um, under this ordinance, um, under this amendment, I'm sorry, if you put, um, if a tower carrier, um, was to build a tower in the industrial zone, would this amendment make them build a 200 one, whether they needed it or not? What if they said, well, all we need in this zone is, uh, 160?
This would be the height, 200 feet would be the height limit.
Maximum height.
So they're not required to build to a certain height. They are required to build a tower that's capable of co-location. That's another requirement elsewhere in the ordinance, so that there's not multiple towers, but they aren't required to build to 200 if 160, 170 suits their needs and enables co-location and improves coverage.
But here's the, here's what the ordinance says, okay? I just read this, so. Tower shall be, not tower, um, up to. What I'm saying is, if it says shall be, that, to me, that would say that they have to build a 200 foot tower, whether they needed it or not. So, if it said up to, they could go up to 200 feet, would make more sense. I, I don't know.
It says the height, sorry.
The height limit.
It says the height limit.
Earlier in the sentence, it's the height limit and then shall be. So it's saying that the limit shall be 200 feet, not the-
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, missed the limit. Limit for a new, okay, all right.
That's not a bad idea, though.
I didn't say it was.
Really?
Like-
It isn't, it's not a bad idea at all.
Okay.
Other than 200 feet.
We've been told that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, we'll, we'll go around, we hit, uh, I jumped ahead of bill. Uh, so Counsel Donovan?
I had a question for Dan. Uh, the amendment is, uh, and it has to do with whether this amendment seeks to add additional industrial zone areas, and maybe you could clarify for us what industrial zone areas this particular amendment applies to.
This amendment would apply to the two industrial areas that are proposed, that currently allow transmission towers. This particular amendment does not add any additional industrial areas. That's a different amendment.
And could, could you just clarify for everybody where those are generally located?
The current industrial districts that allow for transmission towers under your October 10th version that you're considering are, um, there are three industrial districts. One is located at Industrial Park off of Route 1 and across from Higgin's Parkway. It's a large industrial area. There's industrial zoned area along Pleasant Hill Road between Route 1 and Highland Avenue. There's an industrial zone off of Muzzy Road, um, close to the boundary of South Portland where Postal Service Way is. And then there's a light industrial area off of Holmes Road west of the Turnpike in the vicinity of Beetred Speedway. So those are the four industrial areas currently that, in the proposal that would allow towers, and we're talking about increasing the height allowance within, within those under this amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, oh, wait a second. Counsel Sinclair?
We were told that the higher they go, the more, the further out they reach, right? Wasn't that something that we were told? So if we install or build a 200 foot tower, like Counsel Blaze said a couple weeks ago, and that reaches half our town, am I right? I mean-
We were told that, yeah, the higher the tower, the further-
The further it goes.
They, they go. You were also told that there's, um, shadowing, topography effects service, so the backside of hills in other areas aren't served necessarily because of, um, the transmission of RF ways. We were told that one tower is not gonna have the capacity in terms of, um, data and use to serve the entire town. We were told that having one tall tower can interfere with existing shorter towers in terms of, um, overlap and dropped calls and those things. So, the benefits of tall towers and there's all that.
Which is, which is basically what we have now anyway, though. I mean, not to be snarky, but, I mean, the reason that we're here is because we have three small towers in the town that drop calls and aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, so put in a big tower and, okay, I'm done.
Um, I think, did Counsel Blaze, did you have something, another comment? Did, or are you all set for now?
I'm all set.
Okay. Counsel Holbrook?
I'm, I'm sorry, can, I just have a little bit of clarity. In, in, in two minutes, I'm gonna give an, a motion to divide into two, because you've got two separate amendments, so, but give me a minute.
No, 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 no. We only have one on the table right now.
We're only looking at page one.
He only offered one? I thought he offered the package.
Nope, no, he offered one.
I haven't been able to talk about that one yet.
Then when you get to the second page, well-
That's a amendment.
Separate.
It is separate now, okay. I thought it was a package, so I'm glad, now I'm really, all right, never mind, I reserve my, bite my tongue and pull my-
Counsel Donovan?
Uh, you know, Ed's been talking about this for a long time, and he and I've talked about it a lot, and, uh, uh, maybe I'm just slow to the, to the party, but I've really come to believe that there in the industrial zone, higher towers make sense. Uh, I think in the Pleasant Hill industrial zone, a 200 foot tower, which we are told there is a reasonable chance there will be a tower in there, could, uh, overcome some of the shadowing effects, uh, that plague coverage at Higgins Beach where I live. Drop calls occur all the time. It's very, very poor coverage there. You can't drive up Morning Street, you can't drive up Besser Street without, if you're a Verizon customer, and not have dropped calls. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it's a real problem. So a 200 foot tower there, I think, is, uh, an opportunity to cover an area of the town that might not otherwise get any coverage, since it's stuck on the Cape Elizabeth line, uh, and it's sort of in the corner of the town. So, uh, I think it's a good idea, and I'm gonna support this, uh, this amendment.
Okay, Counsel Katerina?
Uh, I also have, um, given some thought to this, um, and for all the reasons mentioned previously, I would support Counsel Blaze's amendment here also.
Okay, Counsel Benedict?
Uh, Dan, I have a question for you, if you, if, if you can answer it. What is the difference in mileage between a 150 foot tower and a 200 foot tower?
Covered?
I can't answer it.
That's, uh, Ivan, let's see, uh, that would've been a good question, Dan.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Ed has it.
150? 150, 12 and a quarter miles radius. 200 feet, 14.14 miles radius, or 628 square miles versus 471 square miles. That's a lot of coverage for one tower.
Right, but, um, Ivan cautioned us also.
I know, I'm, I'm just answering the question.
I'm just saying of, of taller towers, um, attracting more phones and overloading the tower. That's, that's, you know, I'm not disagreeing with, I think it's a good idea to at least have that option on the table, we may be able to eliminate, um, but, you know, towers, some, you know, extra towers. So, um, Counsel Holbrook, did you have?
No, what's up? Uh, is everyone all set down this end? Anything else? Nothing? Nothing? All right. Um, all right, on, we have, um, Counsel Blaze's amendment to, uh, raise the tower height to 200 in industrial zones. We have a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, um, do we have any further amendments?
Yes.
Counsel Blaze?
This is pretty much the same as the previous one, except, uh, I guess in the ordinance stated 1010, the Pine Point Industrial Overlay District, uh, there's an amendment in there saying the Pine Point Industrial Overlay District to delete transmission towers as permitted, as a permitted use. And what I'm saying is, stick it back in. It's an industrial zone, stick it back in for a 200 foot limit. That's the amendment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, for purpose of discussion.
Okay, discussion. Anything further you wanna add to it, Counsel Blaze?
No.
Counsel Katerina?
Um, I would not support this, and the reason I would not support this is, if you know anything about the industrial overlay zone down in Pine Point, I think it's snow's canning. Uh, and if you put a tower in snow's canning, there's this nice little rise in the road that comes down, and there's a nice visual view there, and I would hate to see, uh, towers there for that reason alone. Um, and it wouldn't be moving you away from residential per se, there's a lot of residential down there. And then the third reason is, um, as part of our comprehensive plan- And then the third reason is, um, as part of our comprehensive plan and looking at, um, you know, long-term planning for, for this town, we're kind of moving away from having an industrial zone there. I'm not saying it's being eliminated, but I'm just saying some changes to it to make it a little, uh, fit in better with the, uh, Pine Point area. So that's why, at this point, I would, I would not support this amendment.
Any further discussion? Counsel Donovan.
Uh, I agree with, uh, Counsel Katerina's comments, but I really want, because I just think that, uh, uh, that is a highly visible area. But more so, I think the, the way the overlay districts were drawn was to look at those areas where there was the poorest coverage and play, uh, allow for the placement of towers in those locations. And in very close proximity to the, um, Pine Point Road Industrial, uh, District is the area that, on the southern end of the community, that has been designated as a part of the overlay district. Uh, and it is more sheltered, more protected, very large lot, and therefore, I think there's a redundancy to add, uh, the Pine Point Industrial District, uh, and, uh, and this is much closer to the mapping that we got from our consultants as to the kind of problem we were trying to solve by loc- by forcing the location of towers into certain places.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also, um, agree with Counsel Donovan. I would, um, say that we've got an overlay already close to that that's going to be protected, I meant you won't see the tower, and, uh, that, yeah. Putting it down, the Pine Point Industrial Area, just, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me, but, um, with all due respect. So, um, I won't be supporting that. Um, anyone else?
Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have an amendment, um, to, uh, presented by Counsel Blaze to add Pine Point Industrial Zone to allow cell phone towers. And we have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Counsel St. Clair didn't see her vote.
Counsel St. Clair? Which, which way? Vote it down, okay. Alright. Is there any further amendments? Counsel Blaze.
Yeah. This is brand new to everybody, but it, it's been mentioned tonight. Uh, somewhere in here, we've got to add a little verbiage that puts responsibility on the wireless company that's coming to us to either, uh, put up a tower or, uh, install some sort of, uh, communic- telecommunications facility in town. They have to prove to us, prove to us that there's a substantial or significant gap in coverage. And it's got to be, it can't be, by all we know it is, you know, da-da, da-da, da-da. We've got to see figures. I mean, we have people in town here that go around, uh, that are testing coverage themselves, and it's different. You take a look online and you take a look at these, uh, cell, uh, companies' coverage reports, Scarborough, great coverage for Scarborough. It's great coverage for Scarborough, what are we doing here tonight? So we have to have definite proof. Now, I don't know how you want to word that, but-
Uh, I don't know.
It's just really two words, significant or substantial gaps in coverage. Prove it.
And, and what kind of coverage? Data or written up, verbal or?
Well, it's got to be in the, uh-
I mean, because data and verbal are two different coverage. I mean, he tried to mix, put them together in the map that he gave us. There's, I believe, four different band frequencies.
Well, they've got a, a gap is a gap. They don't have coverage for voice or data or internet, whatever it is. Prove it to us. That's all I'm saying.
Dan, can you stop? Were you finished? I, I thought- Okay. Um-
Just to add, uh, Counsel Blaze's comments, there is a section in the October tenth version that's been in past versions as well, that does cover, that does deal with coverage under I. And that's the intent of that section, turn to page six. There's a requirement that the applicant comes to the planning board, that they do need to produce a coverage analysis showing existing or planned wireless facilities within ten miles of the proposed location that they're considering. And then it goes on to talk about the details of that, and indicates the coverage analysis must use, um, the various frequency bands. Um, that's intended to get at, uh, that matter. If there's additional language the council wants to add to that, that's, that's fine, but that's the section that I'd recommend you work within.
We need, we need some language from, to deal with it, and we need a second, once you-
Second.
Tell us what the language is. No, get out the language.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he, he did that.
Well, if I read this, as part of the, as part of any proposal, the applicant shall submit a radio frequency coverage analysis showing existing or planned wireless, wireless facilities within ten miles of the proposed location. That's not, I mean, that's not telling me anything about, is there a gap?
Um, I think Counsel Holbrook has wrote, uh, jotted down kind of what your feelings were, and maybe could help you on that. Uh, Counsel Holbrook.
I'm gonna take a crack. I didn't write it, but I'll take a crack. Um, at the end of this paragraph, where it reads, "The coverage analysis must use each current licensed frequency band by the applicant, and a map demonstrating significant gaps in service and coverage." Maybe I have a better idea, I'm open to entertain.
Counsel Blaze.
It's a good start. Seeing as I can't come up with something better. But, I mean, it, at least it's in there.
Maybe we should table that then.
It's, it's in, it's in there, and then we can turn around and talk to the planning board about coming up with specifics on how to handle it. I'll go with that.
Okay, so you'll go with that language?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Okay.
So did you write it, you read it back? You need a motion.
Um, Counsel Blaze, would you, uh, yield to Counsel Holbrook to make the motion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
But you have to have to demonstrate, you have to demonstrate that there's a significant gap, that's why.
Oh, me, sorry.
Counsel Blaze has yielded to you to make the motion.
Okay.
And then we'll do the discussion after the second.
He was writing. Can I read over your shoulder? Uh, I, I'll make a motion to add, I didn't write it, um, to last my-
You know, would you like me to-
Would you read it for me back again, please?
You're, you're adding to the last sentence, "The coverage analysis must use each current licensed frequency band by the applicant, and a map demonstrating significant gaps in services and coverage must also be." So I'll move that.
Okay, second, anyone second that?
Well, I'll second it.
Counsel Blaze.
Boy, I thought I could the first time.
Okay. Discussion. Counsel Benedict.
One of, one of the things that I'm still stuck on, and no one has proved it any different, where, where I live, my neighborhood, we have got two antennas that are supposed to serve. One at the school down Bratton Road, and the second one on King's Farm. And I can remember back in the beginning of this, where I believe it was a gentleman that's been speaking to us the whole time, and I asked him about the coverage for that area, and he looked right at me and said, "That's already been taken care of." "We've got the best coverage up there, we've got no problem, you've got the antenna right there." Absolutely a false statement. I can't make a call out of my house, which has no bearing on what we're doing here, but the believability, the accountability, I got a problem with. When somebody tells me, "Yes, it is," he might stand at my house and go, "Oh, I got a daughter with an iPhone that's got the same thing." So I don't care if it's an old-fashioned flip phone that I got, or a brand-new iPhone. The coverage is not anywhere close to good. I mean, I gotta go out in my driveway if I don't want to interrupt a call. And for them, from, uh, New England Hotel or Verizon, I, I, I sort of forget, because I was very much clouded when I was looked at and told, "Oh, we've got that all under control." Until I see it, feel it, and stick it behind my ear, I don't want to vote on anything here. I would rather see, as I've said before, they come to us with what they think is necessary, and we're, and prove it.
So what you're saying is, you're saying, what they, when they sold you the phone in the coverage area, it wasn't accurate at all.
Oh, and I went through six phones, and I ended up with a thirty dollar policy from Walmart to be the, the best up there. And the best is still nothing.
Counsel St. Clair.
Not, I, no, not on this, thank you.
Oh.
I, I was just-
Alright. This way. Counsel Katerina.
Again, I didn't write it down totally, but that's okay. I think the intent, if I threw the chair, could ask whoever's making this motion, that's going to-
Alright, well-
Anyway, is proof, is the proof that there's gap in coverage, is that correct? Is that what you're looking to? Okay, so we need language that addresses that.
Counsel Holbrook.
I'd like to self-admit that I threw a motion on the table just so that there was something to focus the discussion on. You know, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with retracting it if somebody would like to offer something better to address that with. Um, so I, strictly for the discussion purpose value, so.
Hey, Counsel Donovan.
I agree with, uh, Counsel Katerina that, uh, if you require them to produce a map, that doesn't necessarily represent a standard, it's just a, an element of your application. Uh, so I think you need to have it be framed more as, uh, you have to demonstrate it. Uh, you have to, you know, prove is a difficult word, because you're saying, well, what's the standard of proof? I think ordinances, and Dan probably can tell us better than it, that if an applicant is required to demonstrate something, then the planning board has the ability to take into account whether they feel he demonstrated it or not. Uh, uh, and I, the significant gaps, I don't know what that means. I, uh, I started trying to write down what we're getting at, which is to show areas of inadequate coverage by this particular applicant. They, they deem that they have inadequate coverage, and they have to demonstrate that. And, and so by focusing on demonstrating, uh, and that there are inadequate areas of coverage for which the application is submitted, I think you now are putting their feet to the fire, and the planning board has the discretion to decide, are they meeting that, that benchmark in allowing the application to be considered for approval? So if Counselor Holbrook wants to withdraw her-
Because it doesn't have a motion, a, a second, right?
It does.
No, it does have a second, Counsel-
I would try to ta- take a crack at language.
Can I?
You have to withdraw your motion.
Right, right, right. It was still in the discussion phase. Counsel St. Clair.
I just have to say, I mean, this is, this is more, is this not more proof that we need more time with this? Are you can shake, I see your head, Counsel Katerina. I see it going, I know what you, how you feel, I got it.
Okay.
But I, what I'm saying is, I, I can't believe that we're going to continue to keep voting on this. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
I'll happily revoke my amendment.
And then Counsel, um, Blaze will have to retract his second.
I'll retract it.
Okay, and let's go with Counsel Donovan.
At the end of, uh, section, uh, I, entitled "Coverage", a final sentence would be added, I would move that a final sentence be added, that states, "An applicant shall demonstrate that there are inadequate, that there is inadequate coverage for the area covered by the application."
Second, anyone second? Counsel Blaze, second that. Discussion. Counsel Benedict.
It seemed to me that if, if the majority vote wants to turn around and make them show that there is a lack of coverage, that by the same token, they've got to show that what they are stipulating to do is going to improve the coverage.
And that's what this does.
Hmm?
But yes, you're supporting that amendment.
Okay. I'm supporting the fact that it still is not clear enough, it's still too fuzzy. We've got all these papers all around, I don't believe we're in a position to vote on anything.
Okay, there's, we have this in front of us. We have amendments that are already started. You, you know, if you, whether this is up and da- up or down, it's going to get, it's going, it's being voted on right now, so, you know, as we go. So if you have amendments to make this better, we need to do it now. It may go up, may go down, when we get to that point. Counsel Katerina.
Uh, I, I'm satisfied with, with this verbiage, uh, because you do have the, um, the element of demonstration, which is so-called proof, um, and the, uh, um, cell providers have to show to us, uh, people of Scarborough, that there's inadequate coverage, uh, for the area in which they, uh, in which they are proposing the application, so I, I could support this. I think it just adds an additional layer that I know people have had some concerns about, I've heard that from folks who, in the past, so.
Okay. Counsel Blaze, are you comfortable with that wording? Okay, good. Um, any further discussion down this way? Without all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, to oppose. Is there any further amendments? Counsel Blaze.
I make a- I don't know when I can do this.
I don't know.
I make a motion that we table this.
Can we do that?
No discussion.
Non-detectable.
You have to have a second, it's non-detectable. A second. No discussion. No discussion?
No, it's straight vote.
No.
Straight vote.
Hi.
Okay. Motion to table.
Clarity, table to a date certain or just indefinitely? Just to be clear.
Correct.
Right.
Definitely. Well, I, I'm not gonna put a date on it, that's for sure.
I'm just wondering what the next step is. Does it go, refer to committee or does it come back to the council? There should be some
Okay.
direction as to where it goes.
Table it and move it back to the ordinance committee for, for the work.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's been a motion to table and refer back to the ordinance committee. Non-debatable, uh, there's no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed?
Tried.
Uh, play it.
We tried.
This is our turn. Okay. Are there any further amendments? Counselor Holbrook.
Little tiny ones. It's just a little tiny one. If you were to go to page eight and you would go to the bottom under D, which is public notification, and I would like to strike the words "within five hundred feet of the" and replace with a budding.
Mhm.
A budding's a tower site, sorry. And that isn't a form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Can I find me?
Yes.
Uh, just to explain myself a little bit, what happened was when I was reading this, that I was realizing, given the dimensions of the property, something that abuts a tower in the middle of a twenty-five acre property is gonna mean you don't actually notify anybody. So by changing this verbiage to the abutting property owners, this allows for, for notice to be given on cellphone towers.
Yes, very good. Agreed. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, uh, Counsel Holbrook has offered an amendment to, uh, change, strike, change the wording from five hundred feet to a butters. Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? One. Are there any further amendments? Okay. There are no further amendments. With that, okay, we're working off the October tenth, um, proposal amendments with, um, how many amendments now are there?
It's trying to get you...
It was one thing.
Okay.
And I'm sorry that I forgot it. The, on the east side of town, there's a overlay district. Uh, this is not the move.
Here, it was just distributed, um...
Here it is. I got it. There was an overlay district along Black Point Road and Seventy-seven, approximately from Hypershores down to the, down through, um, Scarborough Beach. And when we took a look at that, there were several neighborhoods in that area. Um, and what we wanted to do was just cut that kind of in half, cut those neighborhoods out of there. So it's really the, the zone now would be approximately from Scarborough Beach down and from the, uh, Senatory District down through the golf course.
The, uh, the, what Counsel Blaze just described is depicted on the map shown as, uh, the third page on that, uh, handout I provided. I believe you have it there in front of you. Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I'll wait for a minute, yes. Counsel Holbrook.
Um, so just so we're clear, what this does is it does shrink the area down along, um, through the Proust Neck area where we had an overlay district, and it just kinda tidies it up to the more, you know, rural part of that. And, um, geographically, when, when I, when I first heard of this concept about shrinking it, I did look and it's more realistic that if a tower was to, to ever come to fruition, it would be more in that area anyway, so I'll plan on supporting it.
Counselor Donovan.
Just so people know what this amendment is seeking to do, it really is trying to pare away the neighborhoods, uh, occupied by Marion Jordan Road, uh, for which the previous overlay district went right up to the edge of that. And for those of us who live over there, we call that farm, it's Warbrook, but it's "In God We Trust", that's on the sign there where I get my corn and tomatoes every day. Uh, and all the way over, not a far distance, but all the way to Atlantic House, uh, neighborhood, Kirkwood. Uh, and those are pretty substantial neighborhoods. Uh, and so, uh, I think it's appropriate to pare it back. I think it's a good idea. It still keeps the spirit of trying to, the, the coverage gap maps that our consultant provided are, are still, uh, respected by, uh, the revision. And so, uh, I think, uh, the amendment's a good proposal and I'll support it.
Okay. Counselor Katerina.
Um, I also agree, uh, with this being pared down. I'm fine with, uh, uh, this amendment as proposed by Counsel Blaze.
Okay. Anyone down this side? Another good one, Counsel Blaze. Thank you.
Win some, you lose some.
I agree with, that's right. You never know if you don't try. Any further discussion? Okay. With, uh, we have a second and we've discussed that, so everyone knows what we're discussing for an amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Well, that's person unanimous one. Okay, I'm glad you didn't miss that one. You almost missed that one.
I know.
All right. Do we have any further amendments? Further amendments? Okay. With that, um, I started to say, we have the October tenth draft in front of us with, uh, the amendments from most counselors here. Um, was there any further discussion? Okay, with that, it, you have something else?
I do.
Oh, well, let's get it out.
I know, I know. I'm gonna make it quick, yeah. Um, give me a five-minute recess. Um, I, I'm, I'm just gonna, I, I know it's highly unusual that, that we have something that has, you know, quite so many amendments, but it's not unheard of.
No.
And I do wanna say, I think at this point and at this scenario, for, for what happened this evening was realistically the best outcome that could have happened for this. This is a very diverse, multi-dimensional issue. And again, I feel that this was the best place, as we did this evening, to offer friendly amendments to be in a place that we can reasonably agree to, to try to take on as a document. Um, the other thing I think I'd, I'd just like to mention is, um, you know, as much as, you know, the planning board might be a nice place and I do value their opinion, they do work under us and I view this document as the policy of things and what we want to happen and I'm leaving it up to them for the administration. As much as I, I do look forward from feedback and comment from them, I don't believe at this point, this document is going to seriously alter. Whether we took another year with it, whether we sent it back to ordinance or we waited for planning board, at this point, like I said, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with the document and, and how it is and stands now. And I, I don't think it would be, like, very different from, from where it is right now today.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Katerina.
Um, I would just weigh in before the vote also, um, lest anyone thinks that I'm rushing things. I, I know that, uh, this has been before ordinance, as I've mentioned, for a long time. Um, there've been numerous opportunities for the citizens of this town to weigh in and they have. You guys are sitting here. You've been here. I give you credit. Um, I've gotten some good ideas from folks. I think, I know some of it's been put into this document, but it's like anything that goes through a government process, it's not gonna be perfect. That's the nature of democracy. Uh, there's input from voters, citizens, counselors, uh, and we are, um, I'm ready to move forward with it. I, I personally don't think it made any sense for it to go back to ordinance. We voted out of ordinance and put it in the town council. So the ordinances, ordinance committee is a group of the part of the council, advisory, comes up with ideas, but then it needs to go to the whole council because we represent everybody in the town of Scarborough. Um, and I feel comfortable that it's come to the council, that we've worked on it. We, I feel we've worked diligently on it and I agree with Counselor Holbrook that, uh, what's come out here is, may not be perfect, but it's, I think it's good. It's a good working document to start with and I am looking forward to the planning board, uh, implementing this. That's it.
Counselor Donovan.
I think the, one of the things that impressed me the most was the collaboration with the planning board through this. Uh, they have a much better idea than I think many of us do about the site plan review process and the tools they need to be able to, uh, achieve good route, results with specific applications. And they kept pushing us to, and said that our first reading was not where it needed to be. Uh, and we worked hard, uh, for months. Uh, uh, and at the end, our consultant said, as he was leaving last Thursday, uh, "This is as good as he's seen." An effort to put a comprehensive, uh, uh, process in place to protect the community but yet allow for, um, cell coverage that will be appropriate. So I'm, I'm happy to support this.
Okay. Anyone down this side? Yes, Counsel Blaze.
I'd just like to make, get some clarification, really. Uh, at our workshop last week, it brought up the fact that we have roughly twenty-five different zones in town and twenty-one of them allow special exceptions for telecommunications facilities. Does this supersede all of those?
I don't think so.
Di- di- no, but
No.
Dan, would you be prepared to speak on that, please?
The version that's before you, um, maintains telecommunications as special exceptions reviewed by the zoning board for all telecommunications facilities proposed in the residential districts. It adds the step that the council asked for on Thursday, that the planning board also participate in that review. So there's a planning board review and comment and then a zoning board special exception for telecommunications facilities in residential districts.
Okay, so it's gotta go through two reviews?
In residential districts, it has to go through two reviews. In commercial zones, telecommunications facilities are reviewed by the planning board under this version because the planning board reviews commercial buildings, commercial architecture, all those things.
Yep.
So that's, that's the process.
Good. Thank you, Dan.
Hey, any, anything else? Anything else? All set?
Yep.
Okay, with that, um, have covered that, that, and okay. Everyone in favor? Opposed? Okay. Is there, uh, did you wanna? Take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Five-minute recess.
Seventy-six is to act, authorize the town manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Scarborough Hockey.
Hey.
Just a couple of comments to introduce this matter. Uh, this, this issue was the subject of a workshop with the council back on October first. Based on the input and discussion that that evening and some further input from staff, there's been another round of revisions. Uh, since this matter was tabled before it was ever considered, what was in the agenda and what's before you this evening represents and is a reflection of all the updated input. And if I could, I'd just like to highlight kind of the four or five things that have been added to the, to the document. Uh, based on the input from council, there is not a specific site mentioned in the memo at this point. Rather, it, there's kind of a general preliminary approval of it being allowed somewhere on the campus, and that there's, uh, a bit of an evaluation process to be done in short order, and in fact, done by, uh, early December, so these folks can have some clarity in that regard. Uh, there's further, um, language dealing with community use. That was a subject of a lot of conversation with the council and the, and the public. Uh, that's both in-season, when the ice is in, and also off-season. There's also a suggestion or a requirement that, uh, off-season use be considered in the initial design, so, um, it's not built to preclude some sort of off-season use. Uh, in the event that financial support from the town is ever needed, for whatever reason, uh, we are, uh, electing to have the opportunity, not that we, we take the opportunity, uh, that the town takes over the operations, and that's totally at our election at the time, if, if the need arises. There are no fee waivers being, uh, requested, and there's a final approval that's essentially conditioned on, um, when all the engineering details and the planning board approvals are in hand, and financial capacity shown, that the council has the option of, of really understanding the totality of the proposal, uh, the site, and all of those impacts. So, there's kind of a final checkpoint that the council, and I'm hopeful that these safeguards give the council some further comfort, that, uh, they consider this, this evening, so the folks can get about the business of fundraising, which, uh, is certainly a tall order.
Okay. Did we, was there any further presentations?
No, I, I know folks from, uh, the Friends of Scarborough Hockey are here and available for your questions. Uh, I didn't suggest to them that a presentation was necessary.
I'll go with, uh, um, public comment on order fourteen seventy-six. Three minutes, name and address.
Martin Tripp on Six Ocean Woods. Intrinsically, basically, I'm against any of this type of operation where nonprofit places its structures on private property, on public property. I was gonna go around to my neighbors, and I got a letter, and there's four of us only that signed it, that we were opposed to this, just on that basis. When I went to my other neighbors, they asked questions of what the purpose was, and to the best of my ability, and how you were gonna go about this, uh, I tried to explain it, but then I found that it was taking me a half an hour to explain things, that they weren't willing to come down to town to listen to. So, there was eight or twenty, ten questions that the town council had on this thing, and each question's haven't gone away, as far as I'm concerned. Each one of these questions that you asked the last time I was here, should be addressed before this even gets started. The problem, as I see it in this town, is you want the project, a committee, an ad hoc committee comes up here, states its purpose, and then they wanna get the train rolling. So, if there's an objection, as I have it, they still want the thing to roll. So, they change the schedule a little bit around here, and all of a sudden, this train is rolling out the track, and then you can't stop it. They want a letter today, so that they can start fundraising. So, I don't like the idea in the first place, but I like the less idea that every project that comes through this town is cut with the knife until it's acceptable to everybody. I'd like, one time, to see a schedule, to see something that's concrete, and not just patched together. You may have faith in these guys, but there you go. Tom Hall just says, if something happens and this goes wrong, the town will have the option to pick up the building? Did I, did I understand it right? I don't know. But if something goes wrong, then the town can accept or pass on a mistake. You guys gotta do better than this, really. I mean, let's get a plan, and I don't care where they build it, as long as it's not on town property, it has nothing to do with me. Somebody wants something? Put it out in the type arenas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Ace Houghton, Snowberry, like, Snowberry Drive. Uh, I spoke briefly about parking, the last time I was here, and I just wanna add one thing in my, uh, allowed three minutes. Uh, in the memorandum of understanding, on the third page, paragraph five dash six, it's called, in the updated copy, it, it mentions that depending on the preferred site, the parties recognize that the project will likely require the use of existing parking spaces and may require the displacement of existing parking. Now, the only person, I don't know if this is a person that says it, they must obtain the consent of the school department. Now, is that school department, the Board of Education? Is it the president of, superintendent of schools? Or is it a committee? Or who, who do they have to get this consent? We're taking away the parking lots that we just paid for. We are still paying for the high school parking lot, bond issues three or four years old. We're paying for the Wentworth parking, bond issues just set up. We're paying for the new parking at the library, bond issues probably four or five years ago. None of them are paid for, and now we're willing to sign a consent that will give these away. Take your choice. Right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Bud Hanson. I mentioned to you earlier this evening, uh, just a couple of thoughts. One of my concerns with not in the metropolitan Oak Hill areas, because of my experience forty years ago in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, and a friend of mine, George Wallace, uh, was very kind, and he put up the door, built the, the, uh, hockey rink as well as the planetarium. It was very successful for a couple of years. Finally, the expenses outlawed the, um, uh, incoming income, so they had to do other things, which now, now, turn out to be rock concerts, and, uh, circuses, uh, playtimes, and the administration and the cost of the process were very, very high. One of the problems we had was the, uh, invasion of other people coming in from other towns and other states to, to visit some of the options going on. And living across the street in a, in a complex, which I happened to be the manager of it, so I got very involved with this, they would take parking places that were reserved for people who lived in the community. Uh, it came to a point where the police had to get involved, fire department had to get involved, and it resulted in a small revolution in the little town of Pittsburgh. So, I suggested maybe we could find a place, I, I like the idea, the excitement of, of a hockey, I think it's a good idea, for the, please, not, not metropolitan, uh, uh, Oak Hill. Maybe somewhere on the Hakers Parkway, maybe somewhere, there was somewhere unavailable. Maybe someplace where there's not a lot of, of, uh, home businesses available. And I think probably on the Hakers Parkway, you got, you got the main turnpike, you could host the interstate, you got a lot of activity, and Route One is very, and also my experience with the team traffic coming in on Route One is pretty bad as it is, and the traffic flow has become more and more exciting. Uh, so I thought, maybe take a real good, hard look at this, and maybe don't let the excitement of it determine your confidence in doing it or not doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to order fourteen seventy-six? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You have a mo, you have a motion.
Second.
Okay. Even seconded. Okay, council discussion, I believe that Counsel St. Clair has some questions of FOSH.
I just had one quick question.
Somebody like to go to the podium and, please?
Um, a question that I keep getting over and over again from the public is, and I think I have the answer to it, but I wanna make sure I'm clear on it. In your budgeting, I understand your, your plan is to hire like a manager, a jack-of-all-trades type person to maintain, he'll be like the janitor and the Zamboni guy and all that stuff, he's gonna, one person?
So, no, generally what happens, there'll be a rink manager?
Yep.
Depending on the needs of the facility, he'll hire whatever temporary employment he needs?
Okay.
To make sure that everything gets covered.
And in your budgeting, how long have you budgeted for that person?
So, it's a yearly budget, so basically the expense, income and expense balances including the rink manager.
Okay.
Right.
So, one year, for the first year?
So, I'm not sure I know your.
I know, it's, you, I understand what you're trying to say, but what I'm trying to get to is, I wanna be clear on making sure that people, the, the people that I'm talking to, their fear is that, like some other people have said, this is a great opportunity, it's hype, it's exciting, which I completely agree with. Um, and I've been very impressed with the paperwork and the things that I've read about all of you and, and your plan, their concern is what happens after. So, I just was curious about that person. I understand he'll hire temporary people, but you're budgeting just your first year?
No, 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 so, so two things. So, basically, what we've done as part of the business plan?
Yeah.
Is allocated enough money to fund the full first year without any income at all. It's just be on the conservative side.
Okay, and that, so that's without taking like, you charge people when they come to see games, or?
Well, mostly it's ice rentals, right? So, it'll be ice rentals and skate rentals.
Got it.
So, the majority of the income will come from ice rentals.
Okay, and the boosters will pay?
What's that?
Then the boosters also help participate?
Sure, any organization, so boosters are put in place, for example, at Scarborough?
Yep.
To subsidize the various programs.
Right, right, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was clear when I answered that. That's really, I, I know it's late, everyone's exhausted, I just wanted to, thank you, I appreciate you answering that. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Benedict?
Yes, I have a question for you. In the asking for a, uh, undercut, or whatever you wanna call it, for the property, what is the intention of FOSH in giving back to the community free hours for public skating or whatever needs to be involved in that? Do you have any anticipation of doing anything like that?
So, I, I think there's two parts to that answer. Uh, the first thing is, as a 501(c)(3), we must, um, give a certain percentage back to the community.
Mm-huh.
Um, and I believe that's about a five percent, uh, give back. Um, but the second thing, and this goes, I think, to the land lease, um, that, the definition around that, uh, has not been defined, uh, and we'll have to figure that out, whether, how much of, uh, a monthly or yearly fee we'll be paying for that.
So, have you anticipated anything more than five percent for the value to the community to be able to use the facility?
So, five percent will be given back for free, um, and then, I'm having trouble answering or understanding your question. So, five percent is a given, right? Above and beyond that, we did not identify other ice times to be given back, if that's your question. Right?
I, I guess basically my question is, the all-American adage of this for that, if, if you want the property at a lesser amount of money, what are you giving in return to the community?
Fair, and I think, and Tom, you may jump in here, that's gonna be part of the land lease agreement, to figure out what is fair value. We've got clear feedback that we need to come up with what is fair value for that land lease, and, and we're not trying to look for a handout. So, we really need to understand what a fair value is for that land lease, and confirm it with everybody, and that'll be another approval process.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, at this early juncture, the community use section, um, preserves the thought, though it doesn't quantify the quid pro quo or what renumeration there might be, but it, it does preserve the thought that during the time ice is maintained, all efforts shall be made to allow town and school-sponsored recreational and educational uses. uses. In addition, there shall be consistent, conveniently scheduled, open skate time available to the public. And then during the off-season, the town shall have the unencumbered right to schedule the use of the facilities based on their maintenance requirements and fee structures to be sorted through. So admittedly, we don't have all that sorted through, but that notion that you speak to is preserved, I think, and recognized here. Details to be finalized before we sign anything.
There's no dollar sign assigned to any of that?
No.
Or percentage or?
It's just premature. We don't have those numbers yet, but I would certainly recommend to the council that you do not offer the, sign the lease document until you have the assurances that you need at that time.
By signing this document of understanding, are we committing
No.
to providing land?
There is a, I'll call it a preliminary tacit approval, that we're willing to work with them and locate them on the campus somewhere, site to be determined, terms to be determined.
But is it black and white, or can we back out of it?
We have preserved the option of final approval, once you know the site, the issues, potential impacts of that site, and we're several months away from knowing those details, frankly. The real chicken and the egg challenge here is that they have a very steep hill to climb, which is to raise five and a half million bucks. Without that, this is a no-go. And I think what this document is all about is to give them the assurances and the comfort that they can go out into the community and try their best to raise the money, and at the same time, give us the assurances that we need to protect the public's interest.
Have you by any chance gotten any offers from anybody else in the area?
From a land standpoint?
Yes.
So when we first started out, we looked at several pieces of property, and we still are looking at several pieces of property, because we do not know that this will be the final viable site for the arena. So we'll continue that process as well. So yes, we've approached several pieces of property in the area, and everybody's mentioned Hakers, so we have been out there as well. And we'll continue to look.
Anybody offering free land?
No. But I will say, to be totally transparent, they have offered shared.
Shared land.
Shared parking area. Because again, the rink will not need the parking area in the off-season, right?
Right.
So there are opportunities for that parking area to be used for other purposes.
Council Caterina.
If I may, Councilor Blaze, under section eight of the MOU, it specifically states that this is not a contract, I always look for that in the business I'm in, that says that we acknowledge and agree that even if this MOU is fully executed, neither party here too has any obligation to the other to consummate the transaction and arrangements contemplated unless and until binding agreements are entered into by parties. This document constitutes only a non-binding memorandum of understanding, setting out framework for potential agreement, but neither party is obliged to enter into any agreement whatsoever by virtue of preparation, execution, or delivery of this MOU.
If that's the wording, why are you waiting for raising money?
So there was four, one of the things FOSH board looked at was four things to kick off a major fundraising event, and I mentioned these at the workshop, and they were a business plan, which we completed, a facility construction design we completed. As of yesterday, we received five oh one C three approval of our application, so that was the third. The fourth one is a site location. So when we go ask for donations, we're going to be able to say, and we've identified this location where we'll be putting an ice arena, as opposed to, and once we get money, we'll go find a place and try to build it there. Right? So we're trying to give more solid direction as to where this ice arena would be located.
For what it's worth, it doesn't say it in so many words, but the December third date by which we shall identify the site on the campus, that's not by mistake, that's the night of the council meeting. My expectation is that after this evaluation process and the site is identified, that the council would consider that and approve that. So there'll be a fairly immediate check-in period based on that.
Council Holbrook.
So I guess I'm just going to dive in here real quick. Some of the interesting things that are different compared to the first time we had this in, are we doing discussion now, correct? Sorry, okay. I, I'm going to support it. Again, it's an MOU. I'm actually familiar with that process. We had that process for the Broad Term Project. Again, it's a non-binding agreement. It just says that we're interested in this as a concept, we're going to let our parties work with your parties, and you know, this is some general stock criteria we're looking for, and show me a document that I can vote for or against. Certainly, it's, like I said, you know, there's been a lot of changes. Some of the interesting stuff coming through is, you know, a little more emphasis around what some community use opportunities. I think it's probably clear there's not a ton of support for, you know, the high school site, but certainly, you know, conceptually, we could be open to something else. So again, I'm not too ruffled and, you know, I'm happy to kind of let the process, you know, play out and just kind of figure where it lands. There was one other thing, I'm sorry, there was something else I wanted to say, but it's too late and I don't remember now, so.
Council Donovan.
I think there's a big question about doing business with a private entity. My view of where we are as a community, where we've been with the recession, is that we can't afford multimillion-dollar projects for anything other than what we need as a town. We might need fire, police, schools, those are, those are things you have to provide as a town.
There's always one in the.
Then there's, then there's the category of things that would benefit the town, would really contribute to the town, and those fall into the category of a community center, a swimming pool, an ice rink, and, but they're very expensive, and we can't afford them. So the only way that communities have been doing these sorts of things when they're in the situation we're in is public-private partnerships. So when somebody comes forward and says, I'll raise five million dollars, I'll build the building, then they've got my attention. It doesn't mean that I'm blind to the risks, because as the MOU points out, we have every intention of protecting ourselves in every way possible for business risks, liability risks, level of operation and standards that we have as an expectation. They're all in the MOU, and they're going to be pretty tough when they're done. I'm okay with using town land in some circumstances. Here, this is going to be part of the town. It's going to be perceived as part of the town in much the same fashion that our public library is perceived on the municipal campus, perceived as part of the town. The town doesn't own the public library. It's a profit, a private organization that runs the library, but it makes sense to have it on public space. It's a very valuable thing to have in proximity to our schools. Well, this makes the same sense. One of the big advantages is our kids don't travel. They probably have, a hockey team probably has, you know, fifty practices and twenty games, ten home, ten away. Well, that means out of the seventy times that they would otherwise travel, now they're home sixty and traveling ten. So, I mean, this makes a lot of sense. If we can get kids to wake up an hour later, they're going to be that much better to do what they're really supposed to be doing in school, and that is learning. And I think that's a critical element for me, to put it on the campus. So I'm, I'm good. People probably have heard, I don't like the high school site. I think it's kind of jammed in there. I think there would be issues, site plan review issues that would come up, that would teach us very quickly it's not a terrific site. I think the campus that we have, we're lucky that the people who came before me planned to acquire all this space, and looking at the map, there are other places we can put it, and I think we will settle on that in the next sixty days. I did notice in the paper the other day that, and it bugged, did the exact same thing. Smaller scale, but they did a skating rink in a public-private partnership on public land, right in the, in the town downtown area. So this is part of what's going on. So I'll stop there. I think that's, I support it, and I like the way the MOU protects us as an initial document. We've got a lot of work to do, but I think in the end, the community, if this comes up, will be very pleased with the outcome.
I just want to add that I, I'm supporting this too for all the aforementioned items that have been brought up, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone down here? I want to thank Council Holbrook and Council Donovan for their comments. I feel the same way, I'm supporting this tonight also. Exact sentiment. So, is there any more further discussion? Okay, we've seen no more further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, new business.
And a new business?
Thank you.
And a new business order number fourteen eighty-nine is the first reading, refer to the planning board, the proposed amendment to chapter four oh five, Scarborough zoning ordinance, two men, section six, definitions.
Yes, please. I'll begin, it's very, very brief. I know Council Holbrook may have some comments as well, but what's before you this evening is a simple, but I think very significant modification that the Housing Alliance is recommending to the council, and that is to change our definition of affordable housing, and that's both for owner-occupied affordable housing units and renter-occupied affordable housing units. And in essence, the standard has been, and has never changed frankly since it was adopted, a hundred and twenty percent of area
Median.
median income, and the proposal is to move that to eighty percent or less of area median income as the basic definitional standard of what is affordable. And perhaps Council Holbrook has further comments?
Okay, now, public comment? Anybody like to comment on fourteen eighty-nine? Remember the public. Seeing none, grab a motion. No approval?
Second.
Discussion, Council Holbrook.
So this comes to you, so Housing Alliance has been going through and beginning to just kind of look at overall general policy that we have in place, and certainly the hundred and twenty percent of area median income is extremely out of line with just kind of standards and known documents, you know, from, for instance, state planning, other communities, you know, it's really out of line at a hundred and twenty percent being the definition of affordable. So what happens is we're going from, which is kind of hard to explain because depending on family size, that eighty percent dynamic changes the price tag on a house, but you're going at a hundred and twenty percent roughly from saying, a hundred and twenty percent is affordable, and that's roughly three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar homes, down to eighty percent is what we define as affordable, and you're somewhere in that two to fifty thousand dollar homes. So like I said, this really just brings us in line with current standards and what's going on in other communities.
Okay, anyone else? Council Blaze.
Yeah, can you define a household?
Define a household?
It's a number of occupants.
Just the number of occupants?
The income slides, depending on household size, and that's defined by number of occupants in that household.
But how do you define a household? A man and woman and two children, or what?
It can be single up to, again, the number of occupants define the household.
So it could be five guys?
No, they, they must be related.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
I beg your pardon.
Well, I have to look it up.
I mean, are we going to run?
I can't remember.
If we're, if we're offering affordable housing, are we going to run into a situation where you have a whole bunch of guys going to college? I mean, we all know that people in college are really hurt.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I should probably, this, all this does is generate the definition of what we define affordable housing as. So it defines it at eighty percent of AMI. That's a number that's released to us from Housing and Urban Development, I believe. It's not a number we create, it's a number that's given to us. And from there, as far as, you know, that's a policy question as far as kind of, I think what you're getting at, if we had an affordable house, for instance, in the Habitat Project, realistically, no. It probably wouldn't be five single, I mean, there's a qualification process, there's a homeowner process, I mean, there's other series that come into play. Usually, again, this is just mimicking what's kind of common practice. Again, you know, main state housing and a lot of those other programs already have this similar dynamic set up with, you know, family household incomes is how it's usually defined.
Just as I, if I could, the Housing Alliance considered a much more elaborate definitional change, and I think there's a commitment to keep working on that. They really saw this as the important first piece to come forward with, but I think you'd expect in the coming months, perhaps, further recommended changes, and that may be the time to address those questions.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose?
Order number fourteen dash ninety is act on the request in the Coastal Waters and Harbor Commission to utilize funds from the Pine Point Waterfront Reserve Capital Improvement Account to purchase a crane system to be installed at the Pine Point Pier in an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars, and to authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents related to this purchase.
Yes, I guess I'm somewhat embarrassed to report to you that the new pier, it's about four years old now, and I guess I can only blame the design engineers, but the HOICE systems that were placed on that pier apparently were not, clearly are not capable of handling those conditions, and I'm not sure why those were specked out, but they've been perennial problems for us, so much so, one of them has completely failed and cannot be repaired. It just doesn't make sense for us to keep putting money into them. This proposal has come through the Coastal Harvest and Waters Commission, and it is to replace one of the two cranes with an appropriate crane for outdoor use in this application. Many on this council will recall the creation of the fund that's referenced here, and it was in fact created with monies left over from the pier project, came in under budget, and rather than sweeping those into the general fund, the council at the time created a reserve account, and I think this is certainly an appropriate use, to use these monies. And I will just mention, I heard from one of the fishermen who uses that pier on a daily basis, and he pleaded with me that we move this matter forward because right now, they don't have a crane of any sort and are relying on the tide, and that's, this is the high part of the season, and so he was very interested in knowing this is on the agenda, and was pleased to hear that the council will be considering it.
How much, how much money is in this account?
Currently, there is, it was in my memo, about thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I move approval. Wait a second, we have to, public comment on fourteen ninety. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak?
I don't have any objection. He answered my question. Just tell me there's a dock that goes out and you come in and out with your fishing dock, right? And then there's a small dock and a big dock, right? There's three docks over there, right?
Okay, well.
Just two.
Go ahead, make your comments. Go ahead, make your comments, we'll answer them.
That's my question, is there two docks or three docks over there?
There's only...
Maybe I've got it wrong.
Would you like me to answer? There's only one commercial fish pier.
There's one commercial fishing pier, and then there was another dock, or...
The historical one still remains, but it's foot traffic...
There's a second dock, right?
Yes, but it's foot traffic only, it does not support any of the commercials.
Yeah, but then there's the one for loading the... I just didn't want to drive over there and say, "I can't remember." That's all. It's not a question of any significance, but there's three things in the water over there, right?
Yes.
Thank you. It's kind of simple. I just didn't want to take the ride.
All right, anyone else? Yes.
Robert Rovin for King Street. I just don't know what the cranes used for. What did they use the cranes for?
Well, there's a significant tidal change in the Scarborough River. There's this, at low tide, it can be almost twenty feet difference between the water level and the top of the pier, and they're lowering all sorts of materials such as bait for their lobster business and product at the end of the day, and there are two. Yes, yes.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Councilor Holbrook.
I will be offering to... I should say, I will be recusing myself, as you see in the memo. There's a bit of a conflict of interest in the letter of support, and who is a member of the committee is David Green, which is my father, so I will not be booting on this item, but I do want to express my sincere support for it. You know, it's a much-needed apparatus, as you mentioned, the bait, crates, traps, all those things, and so, I hope you do support it.
Okay. Council Benedict?
As the liaison to this particular committee, I know that they spend a lot of time because they don't particularly like to spend money, whether it's in the fund or not in the fund. But the problem, as it was already spoken about, was in the initial cranes that are there, they have been an ongoing nickel-and-dime problem, and really never worked a hundred percent except on day one. And at this point, to replace the crane, this is not to be understood that they're going to fix what's there. This is a new crane, and for the working men and women that are down there, I think we happen to owe it to them, and I'd be in a hundred percent support of this.
Council Blaze?
Are you saying this is a replacement?
Yes.
Just to clarify, there are two. This replaces one of them permanently. We are making arrangements to have the other repaired, just to really make, so they have something operable during the height of the season, but I suspect that one that we'll repair will in fact break again, and I'm not interested in spending more money there.
So, there's one crane now, and then we're going to have two?
No, there are...
No, there's two cranes.
Two cranes. Both are inoperable, we're getting...
Replacing one, the one that we're replacing, what are we doing with that one? Are we selling it?
I've not asked the question whether it has resale value. At the very least, there's scrap value.
Scrap value.
At the very least, there's scrap value. I can't speak to its mechanical value.
Just curious.
I have one question. The thirty thousand dollars that's in the account, where'd that come from?
Well, the project was supported through grant funding, as I recall, and there was also some local bonding that went into the project. I would have to say it's local monies at this point.
So, they're not paying fees for use of that dock?
They are paying fees, that's a different question.
Okay.
To the extent that fees are paid in for commercial users, that goes to help support the operational costs. There's electricity and water expense. Any overage in additional fees beyond the operational expense does go into this account.
That's what I wanted to get at, so, yeah. Sorry. I should have made myself a little more clear.
Sorry, I'm not thinking clearly.
But they do contribute money to the, to what's down there. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose?
Thank you.
Order number fourteen ninety-one is act on the request to accept the following streets pursuant to title twenty-three of the Maine revised statutes, subsection thirty twenty-five and the requirements of section four of the Scarborough Street Acceptance Ordinance. Old Colony Lane and Winding Way located in the Old Colony Park subdivision.
Yes, very quickly by introduction, back in September of two thousand thirteen, this council approved a memorandum of understanding with the Colony Park Homeowners Association that contemplated certain improvement work to both Winding Way and Old Colony Lane, and which would ultimately end up with the council accepting the streets as public streets. I'm pleased to report that we are, both parties have honored their sides of that agreement, and we're here tonight requesting that the council take action to accept these two roads as public streets.
Okay. Would any member of the public like to speak to order fourteen ninety-one? Anyone? Seeing none, do I have a motion? No approval?
Second.
Discussion.
The name is Old Colony Lane, right? Not Land?
Lane, yes.
Lane, I beg your pardon, was it wrong?
Wow.
Yes, it was a typo, I apologize.
Okay.
Yes, Lane, thank you.
Council Holbrook? Nothing?
Nothing.
Wow.
Way too late.
Yeah, it's way too late.
Okay, I guess we're done with this one. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Order number fourteen ninety-two is act on the proposal from the Scarborough Land Trust and the Friends of the Scarborough Marsh to pay back taxes with interest and cost of cleanup of property located at eleven Bradford Lane, map U twenty-five, lot sixteen A, in an amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, and authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents relating to the transfer of ownership of this parcel to the Scarborough Land Trust.
Okay. Would anybody in the public like to speak on order fourteen ninety-two? Anyone? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Oh, I've... So moved.
Okay. Second? Do we get a second?
Can I hear a second?
Yeah, there was a second.
Okay, I didn't hear it, sorry.
I was first.
Okay. Discussion. Council Holbrook?
I do want to allow for some... I told you it's late, sorry. I do want to allow for some council discussion, but I do want to present my fellow counselors with an idea. I'm going to ask shortly for a motion to table this item to our next meeting, which will be November, the first meeting in November, which would allow a little bit of time for Tom to work with the land trust on a slightly different twist of this proposal. What I would be looking for, and what I'm hoping for, is that the town retains basically an easement, so that as you come down the property, this is, there's already a house on this property, and it overlooks the marsh. And I know it's the goal and the intention of the land trust to take the lower portion and honor the original deal, and likely go to main inland fishing wildlife. What I'm hoping for is for Tom to have some time to negotiate an easement for a small gravel parking lot at the end of the driveway, so that the parking is in place, and an easement to that, as well as a footpath, an easement to some benches, so that you may go down there and sit on these nice benches and enjoy the scenic view. So, that's the purpose of tabling that, just to work out whatever details that need to maybe go in line with that.
Okay. Is, have you made the motion yet?
I, not yet, but...
Just a moment. Council St. Clair?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I would absolutely support that. I had made the original motion, so I'm sorry, I was overstepping myself.
Okay, all right.
So, I will second her. Let's put it that way.
Okay, so, that's a motion, that's a second?
Non-debatable.
Table, non?
Yes.
All those in favor? Standing in special committees, reports. We'll start with Councilor St. Clair.
Um, I don't have any.
Okay.
None.
Okay, Council Benedict. Council Holbrook?
I'm pulling them up as we speak.
Okay, Council Catarina?
Um, I don't have anything.
Council Donovan?
No, nothing.
Okay. Back to you.
Come back to me, back to me. Um, so Historic Preservation is hosting, as you may recall me speaking to, a property owners' meeting. There was a mailing. Again, this is not a closed meeting, it's an open meeting. We do invite anybody that would be interested to come down and participate in it, but it's an owner outreach meeting in order to engage basically the vested parties in what would be the best way to help them and then to encourage Historic Preservation. So, that meeting is on the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday at six thirty here at Town Hall, and Housing Alliance will be meeting on Thursday, November sixth, at their regular meeting. And again, as I mentioned before, just earlier, that they're trying to trudge through the many layers of paperwork to get through things. Appointments Committee did meet this evening. I do not have any names to post, I need to gather a little more information, but we'll be meeting again prior to the next council meeting at six forty-five on the first meeting of November. I think that's it for now for the Liaisoning Committee.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, so town managers report.
Three quick things, I'll be brief. The dredge project is back on, the contractor, I would say of preference, but we're very pleased that Southwind Construction received the bid. They did the work back in two thousand four, we're very comfortable and pleased with that. They will mobilize starting November tenth and be up and running by really the third week of November. They expect to run twenty-four operations, and it's going to be about a two-month process. In fact, they're hopeful to be done by the first of the year. Also, there's a ribbon cutting and open house that went worth this Saturday, October eighteenth at one P.M. And lastly, Councilor Blaze asked that I just respond publicly. Someone inquired, what happens should the revaluation bond question fail? And frankly, there's no other funding provided for in the budget, so at the very least, the schedule that we had anticipated would not happen, though I expect, given the interest, this matter would be the subject of discussion at next year's budget next spring. So, it would likely be delayed a year, subject to funding, of course. Thank you.
Okay. That closing council member comments. Council St. Clair?
Sure, I just have one quick comment. Kyle, my son's second annual five K is this weekend. On Saturday, we have over four hundred runners already signed up, and it's actually in and around the Saint Max area, and if anybody wants to come out, there's going to be a lot of fun things for kids, and I think there's going to be some massage therapists there, and lots of goodies, and so we'd love to have anybody there that would like to be there, so, that's it.
Hey, Council Blaze, just one item. At last week's SEDCO annual meeting, I had a conversation with Paul Austin about the property over in Pleasant Hill Road.
Benjamin Farm.
The Benjamin Farm, thank you. And I asked him about the possibility of going over there and taking a walk through. He says he'd love to, he'd love to be able to have all of us come over there sometime, and he'll give us a tour and tell us approximately what they're planning to do with that, so I'll send out an email to everybody, just let me know approximately when you might be available, and I'll arrange it with Paul.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Council Benedict?
I just have one thing to bring up to the general public. It's hunting season, it's bow and arrows for deer, but there are some guns out there, not for deer yet, but try and remain safe when you have a dog, put one of the orange collars on them, and when you go out yourself, wear orange. It's the only thing that I deserve to be able to identify you.
Thank you. Council Catarina?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just reminder to vote, November fourth, a member of our audience today spoke about concern about people not voting, and just so she'll know, actually Scarborough has one of the highest turnouts in the state. We usually average about sixty-two percent of registered voters, which I know doesn't sound high, it'd be great if we had a hundred percent, but we don't. But it's one of the highest, we got beaten out by, it was just Bangor last year, wasn't it? Usually we have the highest turnout on regular elections. You can vote now at Town Hall, the last day for voting or turning, or excuse me, enough to turn in your absentee ballots, but voting in Town Hall is, I'm going to, October thirtieth? Is that right, Thursday, the thirtieth?
Without a special exception.
Without a special exception, so keep that in mind. You can register even on election day, and if you have any questions about anything to do with the elections or voting, my expert sitting next to us will be toting. And just, you know, this is just a personal note, I get very, very frustrated, and this is personally, when I hear, you know, at candidate forums or wherever, that people feel that there's a lack of communication with the town council and the community, and maybe in the past there was, but we're working really hard to improve that, and I'm hoping that people, you know, give us some credit for doing workshops. I know I always attempt to answer every email, and I apologize if I miss emails, but I attempt to at least give an answer to every email, and I know the other counselors do the best too in returning phone calls and communicating and having workshops and whatever, so I just find it extremely frustrating and disappointing to continue to hear that, but we keep trying. That's it.
Thank you. Council Donovan?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to congratulate Mike Murphy, the Scarborough High School golf coach, and the Scarborough Golf Team on a state championship. I'm probably one of the few people, the size of the print, that is on the second page of the sports page covering the golf scores, is one I scrutinize, but a first win for the Scarborough Golf Team and for Mike Murphy, in twenty-seven years is what was reported. So, I think that's terrific. A team in which everyone contributed. It's a team sport, and they take the top four scores out of five, and our scores were very evenly, no real low ones, no real high ones, so it was a great team effort. I also wanted to congratulate the Scarborough High School Field Hockey Team, which just completed a regular sea, undefeated regular season, and manager Tom Hall and I were in the audience, me to see, he to see his daughter, and me to see my granddaughter, number seven, Rose Kirsch. So, you'll have to remember that, and so, it was a great season for that team.
Thank you. Council Holbrook?
So, I do have a list for council condolences that we typically offer. So, we have Reverend William McNeil Baxter to the family of James David Di Pietro. Mr. Di Pietro was a Pine Point resident and a fairly well-known face down there. He was, you know, fisherman and a clam digger, and life's very well-known and will be missed. Arlene Adams Dumeius, Joseph A. De Salt, and I hope I pronounced that right. He was a resident at the Maine Veterans Home. He was also in the service, he was with the three hundred and ninety-second medical company, and also the owner and founder of Joseph's By the Sea down in Old Orchard. Francis Farwell, Stuart Crosby Guile, Arthur Balcom, Frederick Earl Colbushen, Raymond Osborne, Mary Simpson, and that's it for condolences. I do just want a friendly reminder that the cold season is quickly upon us, and as we do every year, we do try to campaign and fundraise a little bit for our town fuel assistance program, and that we do with Project Grace. There are still clink bags, and hopefully we will always have clink bags in the town clerk's office, and you can help yourself. you can help yourself and fill one up and drop it off, um, and all proceeds for those that go into the Town Fuel Assistance Program. Um, I just would like to reiterate what Jean Marie had touched on, that we do have, you know, an election coming up, do try to vote, it, it's certainly easier now than I think it's ever been in years past, especially with absentee voting, so, you know, I appreciate, you know, you can't always get time off of work, but, on a single day, but, but we have a good gap here, so let's, let's continue the momentum of having good turnouts and good numbers. Um, I guess the last thing I, I want to say about communication, I want to touch on the communication, because that, that has come up a lot, um, there is to a certain, certain point, and, and I truly mean no disrespect to anybody by this, but, but there does come a, a, a small point where you do need to take a little ownership of yourself, I, I think a little bit, if, if you don't ever make an effort to find out what's going on, and I had this conversation recently with a neighbor, um, if you never check a website, you never pick up a paper, you never look on Facebook, you never look on, you know, never catch a meeting, you know, if you make no effort to know what's going on, then you're likely not to know what's going on, so, um, I, I do think there's a little bit of civic duty to try to pay a little attention. Do I think we can improve upon it? Absolutely, there's always room for improvement, but, but a little self, self-involvement sometimes goes a long way. Those are it for my comments.
Okay, uh, just real quick, I'll touch on, um, we had, uh, SEDCO annual meeting that we went to, um, uh, most of us, um, and, uh, what was, uh, special about it was, um, Rocky Rizberra, and the Rizberra family were honored for their contributions to the community through all the years that they lived here and, um, built houses, and, and actually, they took part a lot of times in helping the town out in, in issues that we had, and I remember, we had some roads washed out, and they were the first ones to come right in and help us out, so they've really contributed a lot to this, uh, community, uh, Saint Maximilian, they were, um, a big part of, and, in, uh, helping to build that, and, um, I meant they've just contributed a lot to this community, it was nice to see at the forum at SEDCO, not just honoring new businesses, but the, uh, businesses, uh, one of the businesses that are here, probably one of the biggest, and, um, and their contributions. So with that, I'll ask for an adjournment.
So moved.